It's six o'clock, so I will call to order the meeting. Regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board today is June 3rd, 2024. We have a full select board this evening. Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donar- oh, wait a minute, I was gonna start at your end. Sharon Russell, Matt Eddy, Mary Ashcroft, Joe Donardo, and Kurt Russell. Kurt Hathaway.
Again?
You've had a long meeting already, alright.
Um, I, I would say that, um, I would hope I never had to deliver somebody that size.
Alright, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the five.
The United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice for all.
You're right. So quite a few things to get to tonight. Starting with approval of the select board meetings. Minutes for our May 20th regular meeting. It's in your packet. Is there a motion? That's it. Motion's been made and seconded for approval. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joe, you're abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, and, uh, the vote is four, zero, one abstentions, so I'm gonna circulate these. Alright, um, the orders have been circulated for payment of the town's bills.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Um, anyone want to flag any of the things in there, or are we all good to go? All in favor of approving?
I cannot get any audio on this.
We can hear you, Marcia. Um, all in favor of approving our bills and orders, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five, zero. Are there any board member announcements? Nope. Update from the select board chair, and we'll just take it up in the regular course of things. I don't have anything particular. Are there questions from the floor, public comments, or anyone wishing to be heard who is not otherwise on tonight's agenda? Okay, come on up. Thank you. And if you could introduce yourselves, please.
We both, thanks, sir.
My name is Jacob Carringer. I'm a resident of Rutland Town. Um, this is my wife.
Ally Wenzel, President 1128 Town Line Road.
I will pick you up fine.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and we are here tonight, um, to try to get resolution or, or to move forward resolution, um, of the easement deed and settlement agreement between the town and us regarding the Moonbrook Culvert.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, we've been advised by our attorney to be here tonight, um, just as a reminder that there is a draft settlement agreement, um, and we, uh, were under the impression that the issue would be resolved early in the year this year. Um, so we're just hoping to move that along as, as expediently as possible.
Well, thank you for doing this because it had slipped my mind too until I, I heard your names and it was like, wait a minute. So we had agreed on, you know, the, the easement deed we'd agreed on, that what were we waiting for?
We were tweaking the language in the easement deed, just back and forth, and we sent, our attorney sent Kevin Brown a final.
Okay.
So I think it's just like every six months, something happens and then it kind of stalls out and like,
Yeah, cuz.
I don't blame you for, you got a lot on your plate, so we're just trying to keep it moving and
Yes, please.
Get some resolution to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, actually Kevin, I tried to get ahold of Kevin today about another thing. He emailed us about something else, but not this. So let me add this to my list of things we need to get from him. So the last two new, the, what we hope was the final easement deed, your lawyer had tweaked went to Kevin and we're just waiting for approval there.
Correct.
Yep.
Yep.
And is there a separate settlement agreement?
Um, I believe it's all one, yeah, one, one item.
I mean, we worked on that long ago and came to, I think, agreement in the parties.
I'm pretty sure we had come to agree.
Yeah, the easement language was more of the
There, there were some technical details that we were just trying to sort out and it just went back and forth and back and forth for a while, yeah.
Alright, um, let me, it'll be in the minutes, Bill will mention it and I will call Kevin. I think he's off today. I think there was something in his email saying he was hiking or something, but we'll get his attention and see if we can't get this resolved because you folks have waited long enough and the town's waited long enough too, so.
Okay, it's been three years, so we're just trying to
Really?
Yeah, we're just trying to close that, that chapter, so, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you very much for the reminder, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any other folks who are here to address the board? On Zoom or in, in the back row, for example? Jim Marsh is not on our agenda. Jim is, um, our new delegate to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and, uh, let me take this out of order. We had, had an invitation from, hmm, Rutland Regional Planning Commission or was it to, to, the Airport Commission was being revived, right?
Regional Planning.
Regional Planning Commission, right? Um, and I, I asked Jim if he was interested in also covering that position because we hadn't had knee takers. I think we'd posted it, we've mentioned it at meetings, we couldn't think of anybody. Turns out Jim is, of course, he's been in the region, up at Killington, um, and now in Rutland Town. And I understand, he told me, that you also, you don't have a pilot's license, but you had taken some flying lessons, yeah.
Got married.
Well, you know, those things, yeah. So, um, are you, are you interested in serving as our, the Rutland Town Delegate to the Airport Commission newly to be revived? Alright, what's your pleasure, folks? Motion's made and seconded to appoint Jim Marsh as our rep to the Airport Commission. Any discussion, any, you know, grueling questions you wish to put to Mr. Marsh about his background or experience? Nope, all in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion's unanimous, so, thank you for doing this. Um, I think you're well, well suited to try and figure out what it is they're trying to put back together and how the town can play a role if, because it's not in our town, but I do know that we have people from the town who use it, so.
Talk to Devin a little bit about it.
Good. Okay. And when's their first meeting, or have they had it?
They, he didn't indicate either.
Okay. Alright, well, tag your it, and thank you very much. Alright, um, anything else from the folks who are present other than what's already on our agenda? Alright, um, so assuming several people are here and they're on the clock. Um, we do have under action items, review the Act 250 application for the demolition of a portion of the old Diamond Run Mall building, so why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Reintroduce yourselves to us, please, or I will assume you're somebody else.
Good evening, so my name is David Drake and I have two gentlemen with me and I'm gonna allow them to introduce themselves. If you'd stand and state your name and tell us who you are.
Justin Beldon, I'm the president of, uh, Beldon Construction, right in Rutland here.
And the gentleman handing stuff out is
From MSA Engineers.
Excellent.
Thanks for coming.
Just have a seat. So I'm gonna, uh, be mostly, um, directing these two, um, briefly, since last we met a couple of developments. We were in front of, I was in front of the Planning Commission last Thursday. The Planning Commission, uh, voted that the demolition project is consistent with the town plan. So we have that piece of the puzzle set. And what we wanted to do this evening, in addition to kind of presenting the application, answering any questions, um, reviewing the municipal impact questionnaire is, we wanted to give you a presentation on security because we all know that's the key issue. So I'd like Craig and Justin to explain to you what you've been handed out and what we're gonna be doing, um, within the demolition application with the understanding that, you know, yes, there is the expectation, hope that there's gonna be a Walmart application. And so what we're proposing now for security is for the demolition period. When the Walmart application comes through, there's gonna be a whole new level of security. There's gonna be obviously a different, um, mode of achieving it because right now you're gonna hear about a fence. Whereas, um, when we move forward with the Walmart application, um, the goal is to make it accessible for people to come and shop. So with that is kind of the overview of where we're going in this application and what we would expect to do in the next application. I'll turn it over to Craig and to Justin.
Thank you, everybody. Um, so hopefully the drawing that you have in front of you, uh, looks very familiar to you. Uh, it is the plan that we, uh, presented to you last time. The addition has been, um, the, uh, fence that you see that comes along the loop road. Um, comes to both points in Kmart, the Kmart, uh, building, the former Kmart building, and a section of fence that will prevent anybody from going, um, past Spartan, uh, to the rest of the site. So the fencing, um, will essentially eliminate a fair portion of the property from even being accessible at this point.
Okay, do, do the perimeter, would you please?
Yep, so, uh, starting over here, um, there's a access gate right here. And then that fence comes along the loop road and follows the loop road all the way around. There is another gate there. It wraps around to another access gate here and butts up against the Kmart building here. Then in the back of the Kmart building, there's another section of fence that'll butt in that will prevent anybody from going, um, south from, from the Kmart building. So essentially, the only portions of the property that will be accessible by others is the loop road from either access point and the area dedicated to Spartan. So the Spartan parking lot, Spartan Arena, and this area for overflow parking, uh, are related to Spartan.
Yes.
Question. What about the rest of this? Right, I mean, this, you're saying this was still gonna be open, right?
No, it will be open, but it won't be accessible by vehicles. So if a vehicle comes up, there's a gate here.
Okay.
And there's a gate over here, so unless they're holding the gate or breaking through the gate, there is no access to this area during demolition.
Yeah, what about after?
After is a different conversation, so while the demo is still going on, the fence is there. We will be coming back to you with the Walmart application and that will speak to what's going on related to the Walmart project and what happens to this parcel, what, what happens to this section of the parcel once Walmart is up for, uh, permitting review.
Fire department access. Now, I know most of the building is coming down, but the Kmart end remains there and the Spartan will still be there.
Yep.
And our fire trucks need to, now they, they can do a long way around, but
Bolt cutters. The fire trucks have bolt cutters.
Yeah, I mean, they'll get through their gate. I mean, should one of their pieces of equipment be vandalized, they'll be able to get in, cut a gate, cut a padlock. They, they don't have much trouble finding their way in. Um, a concern is the availability, so something that came up in our, um, Highway Committee meeting last week is in the areas where you're taking buildings down and putting grass in, and then in that red shaded area that I'm assuming is just gonna leave the pavement or the concrete, what happens to the water and sewer infrastructure under that?
Good question. So, uh, as some may or may not know, there is a water loop that runs along here. There's a water main that, uh, comes up the road here and then there's a loop around the building. That water main's going to remain untouched. It has, there is no impact to that water main related to what we're doing with the demo. The sewer, uh, is also going to remain untouched, um, and continue to discharge out of the pump station that, that discharges to the north here. There is, as part of the demo, there is no infrastructure demoing or improvements to the project whatsoever, so the infrastructure will remain as is.
So any lines that are, were under the mall portion area there will still be in the ground? Because there, there is lines in there somewhere.
Right, so there, there will be a demoing of the actual slab foundation or, or the slab part of the building. And then we're required to actually come in and bring topsoil in, so if it's within that area and we encounter something, we will abandon it or remove it. The actual main infrastructure, the thing that supplies water to the building itself, that will remain. Any service line or connection into the mall will be disconnected, uh, related to that.
Any hydrants that are, um, disconnected or no longer in use will be identified, so if the fire department has to get up there, they're
There is no proposed abandoning of any of the fire hydrants out there. All the hydrants that are out there are going to remain out there. There's no plan to abandon any hydrant. Yeah, there are no plans to abandon any hydrant and in subsequent applications, there might be some additional hydrants that get added out here in addition to
Are the hydrants on the building being demolished or are they in the ground next to?
They're, they're all for the perimeter.
Along the side, so those will all remain.
And there were some, like in the island, I believe, out in front, there were some
Yep.
Um, in maybe we're around the corner, I can't remember where they all were. Those will still be there?
Yeah, there is, there's no proposal to abandon any hydrant.
And they'll all be good.
Correct, for the demo application, that's correct.
So, okay.
So there are some additional measures which we identified in the brief narrative, Craig, if you just wanna walk through those.
So, um, in addition to the fencing, um, we have the four security gates, um, that are identified, so one over here, uh, one here, one here, and one there. Um, the, the Kmart building will actually be made watertight, um, and inaccessible. So it will basically be improved to allow or to prevent anybody from being able to get inside the building. Um, all individuals on site will be required to check in upon arrival. Um, hopefully the fencing will, uh, uh, prevent anybody who was looking to come up here for another reason and they'll just continue and, uh, find their way out of there, but anybody on site will be required, um, to check in with Beldon. So Beldon will secure any openings created with barricade and plywood to the extent necessary for Walmart to keep everybody out. Um, Justin can speak to that a little bit more. There will be cameras installed on the fencing or within the area to be able to monitor the, the property 24/7 while the demolition is going on. Um, and then there is a potential for additional safeguards as needed during demolition and as, um, as situations arise and need to be addressed. Um, as far as any specific questions that you have related to that stuff, I'll defer to, to Justin on that, but that's essentially what's being proposed at the moment.
Who's behind the cameras? Is there a private security company? And who's on call if the private security folks pick up something? And this goes back to what I mentioned, our previous Act 250 amendment, which put the burden on, um, the property owner to provide the security and also to set up, I think, either a contract with the sheriff's office or possibly the state police for responses. So the town would not bear that responsibility. So where, and, and I think, where are we with that?
Yeah, so, um, the security camera is gonna be part of
Part of our contract, um, and the attend is, uh, something very similar to, uh, like the trailer mounted ones that were there when they were building the car wash. Um, you know, trailer mounted, solar powered, they can see, uh, three or four of those just strategically placed out, so we can keep an eye, and it's also keeping an eye on, on our own equipment too. And I don't know exactly how those work because I have never dealt with them directly, but I assume there's a, an alert system of some kind, monitoring system, but I don't think there's, uh, an actual, like, it doesn't call the police when it's, when there's someone's alerted there.
So we kind of know who's gonna respond or who's expected to respond, and we're really hoping to hear that it's not gonna be our local police department.
Right, and I, you know, yes, and the, the concern that we have is, what is the appropriate response to the threat? So if someone is engaged in criminal activity or is armed or is brandishing a weapon, then there's no private security that's gonna be, um, responding to that. And after that, there's going to need to be, um, response by law enforcement. So that's not gonna be eliminated, nor would, um, any kind of fire. So, you know, they're still gonna need, need to be, um, criminal, you know, police enforcement as well as fire protection in terms of how there's gonna be a response to lesser categories of activity. So people wandering on, um, illegal waste disposal, um, they're certainly going to have to be the owner, uh, the property owner engaging in, um, not only monitoring, but actively, um, responding to those kinds of situations. We're hoping that the fence is going to, um, lead to a significant reduction, not an elimination, but a reduction. So to the extent that we're still gonna have people coming through the woods, coming in, you know, the backside or trying to scale the fences, um, we're, we're really hoping that the cameras and surveillance are gonna let us know what's going on and we can respond accordingly. So there is a certain amount of, we're gonna put up the fencing, we're gonna put up the cameras, we're gonna control the area. There's gonna be active demolition and we are, um, ready to see how effective that is. And, um, as, as, as Craig just said, you know, we want the flexibility and are accepting of the flexibility in a permit condition, um, that acknowledges that there's going to be authority through the commission. I think really what will work better and faster is communication from the town or any other interested party that believes that additional measures are required. In other words, we're not gonna, we're, we're not looking to only respond if it goes through Act 250.
You should know that we are not a 24/7 police department, so, um, any response after hours, after our hours need to go somewhere and, and someone needs to be responsible for it.
And, and I would assume that if at two o'clock in the morning, it becomes known that, that there's firearms being used, um, a clandestine drug deal going down, um, that calling 911 will be the, the, the first and really only option.
Yeah, once, once you get to criminal activity, you're gonna call state dispatch, which through 911 or whether you call state dispatch, an appropriate police department's gonna get dispatched, whether our department's on, state police is on, or if it's four in the morning, Rutland City Police would be heading down there and that's just, that's how any of that policing works. It's, it's nothing out of the normal.
I don't wanna speak directly to the demolition, but, um, it's gonna be a very active construction site and my experience is that's gonna cut down on a lot of the, um, riffraff, you could say. But it, it's gonna be a, a, you know, an active site that, and I think that will deter, uh, a lot of people rather than just being, you know, an empty abandoned building.
The only issue I see is if you have equipment trails up there, they're gonna get broken into and we're gonna be a listless stop, we're gonna do a bunch of light and try to figure out where it went, who took it. Yeah, escalated, you might wanna like escalate the doors, so shut, just things you happen to have already on.
Yeah.
Besides a camera you put fluid on it.
Right.
Unless they figure out we're not coming, they'll, they'll be here trying to get some free stuff.
We probably won't leave too many valuables.
Yes, pull the job trailer home at the end of the day.
If you can fit cars down.
Okay.
On this backside where Sears was to be.
Yeah, right in here.
Yeah, how you're gonna secure that.
That's a, that's a good question.
I can fit a bridge through there.
Through there.
I've got the skid steer through there, but
Not saying it was the most spacious drive-through, but
Find a couple of big boulders.
Is there some trees right, yeah.
Yeah.
Great big hole full of water.
We'll get that noted on the plan. No, we'll, we'll do, we'll, we'll get that noted on the plan. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We'll update the plan and show that we're gonna have some kind of obstruction there.
Good, how, how high is the fence? Six foot chain link?
Yeah, six feet probably.
Okay, alright.
Anything on the top of it?
Not anticipated, no, it's
Because let me tell you, they're pretty clever.
If people wanna get in, they'll get in.
Yeah, it's pretty hard to stop.
Just as we were speaking briefly before, um, the holdover permit conditions will continue to apply.
Yep.
So we would look to just some confirmation of that or just an indication, um, of that and um, so you're not concerned about fire having access to the site?
If you check with the fire department and they want something, you let us know and we'll do it.
cordless grinders and bolt cutters and you just cut the lock off the fence and there you go.
There, there, yeah, there isn't much.
If someone changes their mind and you let us know, we'll do it.
Right. Um, and ambulance would have
Give the fire department a key.
Yeah.
That might be, if the, if the right person has the key when the call comes in.
Save Justin a bad luck.
And then you had
Gonna have a mat and we're gonna put the key.
Fake rock.
Don't tell me one. Bangside like eight post, yeah.
Um, trash on site. You had a very good schedule of what you're gonna do for, you know, the construction debris, but there's a lot of trash up there, so how are you gonna get?
Oh, the trash will be removed, so there's gonna be a little extra than, than what was in the building, but
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll have to, part of our contract, we have to remove all the trash.
Okay, and that goes to town landfill or town transfer station or does it go to Hubbard's?
Working on, we're gonna, it's gonna probably go straight to the landfill.
Okay, not to the transfer station.
No. It'll be, it'll be a haul down with big trailers, straight.
Yeah.
Do you get either Cassell or Hubbard's to bring your roll off and just put it all in?
Probably just, uh, flat bottom trailers. Yeah.
You've done this before.
Yeah.
Salvage what you can.
Okay, what else do we have? You know, I've had a chance to visit with the police department and that's why you have some of the questions that you do.
I don't know if Dave has any more questions because he did bring up the
Yeah. Um, Dave Sears, our Highway Commissioner, what do you have from?
That, that was it, just, uh, what, what, what was gonna happen with the water and sewer, and that's been asked and answered.
Okay, alright. And I know the fire chief can't be here, but we've got two firemen on the select board, so kind of got it covered. Um, so how are you going to do this to give us those few assurances, um, some amendment or a separate letter like this? That also goes through the district commission saying?
Yeah, what you see, what we're doing here is gonna be filed with the district commission, absolutely.
Okay.
So we're gonna add, um, the, the, the
Jersey barriers.
The Jersey barriers.
Okay.
Um, and in terms of, you know, the the application included the Stow Club's Highland analysis. And so what I did there was to identify what I thought were potential critical permit conditions which needed to be addressed relative to the demolition. So you're concerned about the security conditions and there's no request to modify them or delete them, which is why I didn't address it in the Stow Club's Highland analysis. So from my point of view, the application is already doing what you want it to do, which is to leave undisturbed the conditions which were part of the original approval, so.
Since you're gonna do this anyway, could we have an affirmative condition that, or an affirmation that indeed the other security?
Yes, and what I, what I wanna make sure of is though that it's, we need to get this demolition done. This is gonna happen no matter what. Obviously, we've publicly said and are working hard on trying to put in an application for a Walmart. That application is gonna have its own set of security requirements. That application is gonna have its own set of security requirements.
Sure.
And it's going to be dealing with the property once it's, we hope, redeveloped with a store that's open with a Walmart supercenter. So what I wanna make sure of and what I have to be concerned about is that I'm not looking to create a critical permit condition in a demolition application, which is then somehow gonna be used or held up when we come forward with a Walmart application. So that's my concern as the attorney on the project. But your your interest in having that reaffirmation is not something that's a problem. Those permits, as you know, run with the land, it's an existing condition. And I just wanna make sure that we're not suddenly gonna have a problem with a subsequent application. So as long as we can do that, I I don't see it being a problem.
Application in front of us and that's the one.
That's the one you have.
I mean, basically, we'll talk security when we see the Walmart application.
Exactly, and I don't want, I don't want that application when it goes for review to have to then contend with um an unnecessarily complicated Stokel's Highland analysis because the demolition permit contains a condition about security when we're obvious, when as part of the Walmart application, we're gonna do a comprehensive review of security, so I just.
You don't have a problem with the affirmation that.
It runs with the land, it's a, I mean, from my perspective, permits is they run with the land, the conditions run with the land, they say what they say. And the application in the Stokel's Highland analysis does not only address those that I thought were relevant to what we were proposing to do in demolition. We were not proposing to alter security and a host of other conditions. Otherwise, I'd be looking at, I don't know, two to three hundred conditions that I would have to explain why there's not a a finality threshold burden. So.
So what do we need to do to move this thing forward?
We need each department head to sign off on the municipal impact questionnaire.
Is there one for the demolition?
We supposed to vote to direct them to do that?
No, I will, I I guess.
We we provided the municipal impact questionnaire and we want, you know, we're asking the appropriate personnel to um complete the form. We believe that we're not gonna have an undue adverse impact on municipal services and that the project as proposed complies with the applicable criteria. So yeah, we are, we're looking for the town of Rutland to move forward with that municipal impact questionnaire so that I can get it filed with the commission so that we can keep this thing moving.
Right. The planning commission did vote that there was compliance with the town plan, so that was within their wheelhouse to do and they did that. I have asked, you'll remember, a couple of times that department heads review the full application and thank you drop for dropping off a number of these. Um I did, and other than those few things that I raised, I'm satisfied with this. So um whatever the department heads now should each, I'm assuming they would have let us know if they found something, the police, we just discussed it in the police committee meeting. Yeah, um fire committee, hopefully they looked it over. Um and highway looked it over and they've raised their concerns about high, it's actually highway water sewer, so they've raised those. So I'm assuming most department heads are ready. Have we got any transfer station? It doesn't sound like transfer station is affected because most of the plans are to take the either recycle reuse.
That's right.
Or um take it elsewhere to a landfill, so. Let's, Bill, if you could, since you're our point person and administrator, would you please circulate now the municipal impact questionnaire among the department heads and have them sign off? Okay, if anything pops up that we haven't talked about and they have had time and um we've raised it in our various committees, if anything else pops up, let us know right away, okay?
What's your proposed um timeframe?
For the the demolition itself, well.
But so depending on this.
Depending on. I can tell you, I can tell you, so so the the application's been filed. We knew we were coming here tonight, we knew that we're gonna do a supplementary filing of exhibits. Again, I urge you to become familiar with the Act two fifty database. You are a statutory party, you can monitor this application and what comes next. I can give you the number, I can give you a training session with that. Ed, um it goes in, the the first step of the process is for the Act two fifty program to decide whether we have filed what's called a complete application. We anticipate that it will be at least three more weeks before the Act two fifty program will be able to tell us whether they think a complete application's been filed. If Act two fifty decides that a complete application's been filed, then under the statute, they either have to have what's called a prehearing or a hearing within forty days or alternatively, they notice it for what's called a minor amendment. And that means if it's done as a minor, it's under what's called Board Rule fifty-one. A draft permit is proposed, a notice of the draft permit is circulated to the statutory parties, which includes you. And I think there's a minimum of twenty days under which any party can object to the draft permit or request a hearing. If there's no objections, then the draft permit should be issued shortly after the expiration of the comment period. If there is an objection or a request for a hearing, then the commission will need to engage in a deliberation and decide whether the request is meritorious. If it decides it's meritorious, then a hearing will need to be scheduled. The hearing will need at least fifteen days prior notice and all statutory parties will be invited to attend thereafter, evidence will be taken, a decision will be issued and it goes on from there.
This is why I don't do that.
And you wonder why it takes so long to get something done in this state.
Is there an ultimate sign off by the select board on the municipal impact questionnaire?
Yeah, I mean, no, it's usually, I mean, my, the way I've seen it done is that um the select board would direct a designated person, town manager, town administrator, to sign on behalf of uh the select board or the board chair, you know, towns might do it differently, but that um after you um concur and we would appreciate a decision by the select board so that this can be communicated to the commission because I think your your endorsement, your affirmative vote is going to um be relevant to whether the district commission would feel comfortable in using what's the Board Rule fifty-one procedure. So that's why we really appreciate the meeting with the planning commission and they gave, there was one member in particular who raised the security concern and so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we knew it was your concern also, so you know, that's what we're doing here. But as soon as you can vote, I don't know when your next meeting is or or what, how you wanna do it, but certainly we would appreciate a motion and a vote by the select board to instruct that the municipal impact questionnaire be completed and signed and that the town give its endorsement to the project as proposed.
So much.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made seconded and furtive.
Beat me to it.
I was ready. Laid it out so nicely.
Wait a minute and stipulate that Mary can sign.
Well, I, we're also gonna have Bill circulated as, if if that's okay. Have Bill circulated as our administrator among the department heads, because he he needs to do that. And then select board um approval bill will sign. Is that okay? Okay?
Yeah.
Well, let's take a vote.
Call for the question.
Did I duck that one? Okay, I think I did, alright. All in favor of the motion to approve the demolition with Bill circulating the municipal impact questionnaire, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Is it all right if I take this? Does anyone need this? Am I am I good to go with this?
I think we have several.
You you do have several.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be back.
Thanks for coming. And thanks for doing this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, that takes care of E.
They can't do that fast enough.
Alright, so we are on now to department head reports, is Larry on? Okay. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
So I lost what I gave you.
They're in there.
Are they?
Yeah.
Okay.
First the, first any uh questions on this one, or are the uh monthly stat chief Russ?
So who is it that's tracking the sex offender registry?
Officer Plackis.
Right, okay.
Best deterrent is that dog.
Two calls to Cortina already.
That's for us too, that doesn't include state.
Right.
Neat.
I I don't think they're taking vouchers, I haven't heard anything about them taking vouchers, this is a cash money only clientele.
Okay.
So are they're not open to the public like they used to, yeah?
They're not taking vouchers from DCF that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Just a hotel.
It's just a hotel at this point. They're not housing, they're not housing the homeless population for it.
Sure hope they did some super duper sanitation and refurbishing.
I doubt they did.
So they're just open for regular business then?
Correct, yep.
That's interesting as heck.
Well, then they're in compliance with their Act two fifty permit and therefore they're.
Oh yeah, no, I understand that, it's not, it's not that portion, it's the condition of the property. After two and a half years of abuse. I'm not sure. I don't, anyway.
That's why you have state officials inspecting.
Correct, I don't like things on Grove Street and Pinnacle Ridge, no.
Okay, any questions about calls that have been made?
Actually, funny enough, Joey brought up North Slope McKinley.
Yeah.
You brought that up.
Yeah, well, I just see that, that's close to home.
Officer Plackis actually stopped a car there that tried to flee and it turned into a fentanyl trafficking charges.
So 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 the 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 individuals, they're not at large anymore, or they might be.
Four of those no sugar lemon cookies that you guys have up here.
Okay, thank you Lisa, but you're on, you're live, you know, in our meeting. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that did lead to fentanyl trafficking charges.
Neat. Very nice.
Good. Um alright, what else?
So then we move on to our monthly stats of the south end of town. Uh we had sixty-six calls for service down there. Average uh for the month of May was forty-eight percent of our time we spent down there.
Okay, it's dropping.
It's 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 down from not two thousand twenty-one, it's still up in there, two thousand twenty and I think two thousand prior to COVID, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we're not gonna, I don't know if we'll ever see those numbers again. And just the way things are at this point in time. And the, right now, there's not a homeless issue that the state's housing the people. Uh I wonder if they'll have room in the state for all the people when this fall comes. What's been happening, we'll see what they do. We have had other hotels in the area, I spoke to police committee about it, who uh wanted us to throw people out, but one of the judges in Sierra Mont decided that in order to throw somebody out, DCF has to give them a ten-day notice in order for them to get thrown out. So they tried to get us to throw them out, but our officers were smart enough to figure out, read newspapers, whatever, and said, yeah, we can't do this. Uh good, then they didn't like us, so they did some cop shopping, as we call it, tried other agencies to get us to kick them out and even officers, officer, Deputy Chief Washburn, then uh Officer Dumas and then State Police, so. Yeah. And they, yeah, so. We, we're not gonna throw anybody out of the out of the state voucher program simply because there's, you most must stay beyond twenty-eight days and now Judge Horace says they need a ten-day notice. We're not, otherwise you're gonna, we're gonna get sued if we do that.
Okay.
All I have at this point in time.
Um we did have a police committee meeting, we tracked expenditures to see how they were going. We talked about to get a better understanding of of the over, the overtime line was fairly high and it was primarily because the K nine training program required the officer and the K nine, we don't give the K nine overtime, but the um the training program was longer than an eight-hour day, so he, you know, he had to be paid for the overtime, so that's why there was a substantial amount of overtime to one officer. Um we do, when we have overtime available, it's equally allowed, um shared among um interested police officers, so they all get a shot at the overtime. We, let's see, we wanted to make sure that the AFIS machine, the fingerprint machine that we've authorized has been paid for or we have sufficient funds to pay for that and that was part of our plan because we had vacancy savings to.
We wanted to make sure that it got paid, we checked with Carrie, Carrie, if you.
Yeah.
Make sure that the AFIS company was paid, so it doesn't come a bill after the first of July.
Right, we really need to make sure, so if between the clerk and treasurer's office and the police department, we'll make sure that that bill did come through and was paid. And if you need to rattle the cage with the AFIS folks, tell them they're gonna be waiting a very long time if they wait after July first to send us a bill, so maybe that would help.
I think we had a purchase order with the price on it.
Right, what?
We did.
Yeah.
We did.
So you got a little under a month, but let's make sure we're.
But we're authorized to pay it, it comes out and without any issues.
Okay.
Right?
I think so. Um but we also usually say, see the, you know, on Carrie's end, the check is ready to be written and that's what we authorize in these binders here, so we need to make sure. Okay.
Mary, this is Carrie.
Yes.
Hi Carrie. We were just talking about the today and we still have not received any invoice for that machine, it has not been paid yet.
Okay, so that's the answer, let's get the invoice so that can be paid. And we only have one meeting left of the select board to authorize that payment, so. Yep.
You wanna get paid, submit an invoice.
I think that's a really nice way of putting it, yep. Okay, thank you Carrie. Anything else, Matt? What else from our police committee meeting?
I don't know, I don't have the minutes.
I just, I got one, just, yes, I told you guys, uh before the first of July, the care over money from the Cortina fund.
Yes.
You guys had to vote on it to not just going to general budget.
Put that on the agenda bill for next time.
We don't forget.
Yeah, yes, please.
So if they're not taking vouchers and they're not doing, they're not subject to the agreement, right?
Correct.
So anyways, you'll have the minutes from the meeting next time, but you know, we talked about overtime, we talked about uh shift scheduling, uh you know, in terms of coverage and how officers are getting scheduled. And we talked about the draft alarm ordinance and Mary had, took a note on a comment to to look at, so we can move that forward.
Right. And if you look at the, you know, the detailed call sheet that the chief just gave us, the times and the the times are there. So the police can track when their busiest times are and that's what we were discussing for the, set the shifts to cover when there's most activity, this basic stuff, we're not gonna do it, but we're leaving it to the chiefs to figure out. Okay, I think that's.
Are they telling you that they're not putting anybody up in the motion anymore?
Uh they haven't told me anything, I have my own little found out that they're not taking a DCF vouchers, the DCF is not not giving the Cortina any money for vouchers for the homeless population at this point.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah, we got quite a few of them and they didn't let. Okay. Yeah, we got quite a few of them, and they didn't last more than a day. Because they don't follow the rules.
Okay.
Any, um, pending issues with your end of the building?
No. We're pretty, pretty happy about that whole thing.
And so the only, I guess, little thing that we left out is the keypad and the entrance way to get in and that. We'll figure out that. Someone will figure out to get that, okay. But otherwise, everything else is pretty good.
Okay, good.
Okay, I don't think there were any motions that came from the police committee. Just the AFIS and Cortina Fund for next meeting, that we need to approve one and rededicate the money from Cortina into its own separate fund. Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Do you need us to stick around? So stick around.
I don't know. Uh, is there anything else? You were here. Oh, the alarm ordinance, we did get feedback on that from the police department, and they're pretty much not being hired to respond to alarms, so it, we don't really need to comment for this. So the fire committee can move forward on the alarm ordinance, and they don't really need the police input on that. Okay.
All security ones go through state dispatch, don't they?
They have to pay a fee in order to, if we were a twenty four hour agency, I'd say, yeah, we'll do it. We'll stick around. We have, yeah, but we're not.
When we get there.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Evening, how are we doing? Well, things are moving along, mowing, and the pool, uh, will open on Saturday, weather permitting, but that doesn't look good right now as far as the weather, but we haven't had a dry weekend since November, so I guess it really doesn't matter. Uh, but we are planning to open. We have school functions this week and next week, and then we open for real on the thirteenth. We had signups tonight and tomorrow night, and I think just off the top of my head, we had probably forty people sign up tonight for pool passes and lessons tonight. So I left, they were still, they're actually still going on. If anybody wanted to sign up, they could. So that's a good sign. Uh, the pool is ready to go, which is another good sign. Baseball is wrapping up next week, believe it or not. It's already been going, and thanks to all the coaches for dealing with all the weather and, and everything. Um, Dewey Field looks really good with our improvements that we made last year, so everyone is commenting. Bill's been there, so Bill could tell you, it looks, looks pretty good, and we'll keep maintaining that. Uh, the lights came down at Dewey, so if you get a chance, you can drive over and look, they're gone. Uh, Highway has taken them out of the way, so thanks to Dave and the boys for removing the rubbish, and, uh, thanks to LaFaso for doing a great job of getting them down efficiently, not doing too much other than a little cosmetic work on some, some grass. Um, they're gone. So it makes a big difference, just if you've ever been there. It's kind of weird. Not seeing all these poles all around the tennis court. Those are all gone, and all the big light poles are gone, so it makes a lot of difference.
Order to take the money from the depreciation fund for that work.
So they had finished, so I had, he sent me the bill, so I, I put that in there. Um, I sent to you, Mary, and I think I didn't, because for some reason, Joe, you're, I can't get your emails. I type in Jade and R, it doesn't come up on my thing. I'm assuming like everyone else. So it wasn't on purpose, but the lifeguards that I'm recommending for hire are, if they're not in your pocket, I know they're in the package. Thank you, Bill.
And you do accuse myself from further discussion, so.
So we, we lucked out, we luck, you don't have to leave. We lucked out, a lot of the guards, all but like three were, uh, certified, so we're good, and the ones that weren't, found a place and a home to get certified. I'm carrying a few extra than I normally do because of the way the staffing is working this summer. A lot of the college kids are doing internships. So I added a few to, it'll be the same number of guards and same amount of time. I just want to make sure I'm fully staffed and then moving forward. I'm in good shape.
So here's my question. None of, none of your relatives are on this list?
My relatives have not been on this list for, my daughter is now twenty six, so when she was working for the town as a lifeguard, yes, she was on the list, but she's no longer.
So this is for information only. We don't really need to.
No, you just go, yeah, like if I, like Dave hires somebody, I'm, I guess I get that same. I'm just letting you know, these are the people that I've hired, interviewed, and hired. Uh, the last four, uh, they're hired on condition that they pass their lifeguard. They will not have a job if they don't pass their lifeguarding certification, because that's all I hire. At the pool.
So you got by your, you had a, you were talking about a potential glitch.
I'm okay.
You're okay.
My heart, my heart is beating normal now, and I'm, I'm feeling good. So yes, it wasn't for a while, and now I am. Um, we will talk when it's budgeting season next year. Obviously, minimum, a couple of years ago, we bumped up our starting pay, and then lo and behold, minimum wage bumped up to now fourteen oh one. So we will be increasing, um, our lifeguard salaries, but that will be at budgeting time, and we will talk about that to stay ahead of the curve rather than to get behind the curve, because we want to keep them. Matt, you can come back in.
Yeah, it's.
You're good, Matt.
So the select board doesn't have to vote on this because there's no conflict.
Yeah, this is correct.
This is in your wheelhouse to hire entire lifeguards, so you're all set.
Correct. It is. Our previous discussion was, and I think our vote on a policy which we've modeled with personnel policy, so the select board has to decide if we're, if you're gonna hire a family member, because.
But he's not. So he's okay.
But we're the rec committee and we oversee him, so.
Right.
I just want to make it clear, I, I.
Well, if there's, if, if people would feel more comfortable. Nope, we're good. Mike hires and fires. He doesn't need anyone.
Um, and so that's gonna go smoothly, lessons and, and everything, everything is looking really well. The, uh, the only other thing, when I wasn't here last meeting, apologies for that. The, as far as the situation for a maintenance person at Dewey, and Matt briefly caught me when I was doing one other thing. So I just want to, um, move forward and I'm assuming hire or post for hiring for Dewey. I mean, once I'm out, I think I can handle it, to be perfectly honest with you. So if, if you are, we can, it's two more weeks, and then I'm not even, it's actually five school days for me, and then I'm good. I, I think I can finagle something, and then I can check back with you. And because once the season is over, like the baseball season, it's just mowing and weed whacking and cleaning. It's not, I'm not lining for games, I'm not taking out trash, I'm not. There's a big difference once baseball is over than when baseball is going on. So, uh, we can talk about it later. I just know Matt had heard back from the lawyer and what you had told me as far as.
Yeah, so basically, and I've got notes on this somewhere, but, um, you know, the question was, you know, can we, can we use somebody from another department? And that, and that was gonna be a problem with the overtime rules if we're doing that on a regular basis. There was, uh, there is an exception for occasional, like, fill in use, and so maybe that's where you're at right now, if you've only got a couple of weeks to get through or something, but, um, otherwise, or, or even if overtime applied, I mean, it doesn't really matter if it's a couple of weeks, probably can handle it, but uh, if you're looking to fill some, that position for the summer, then we would have to post it.
I, I wanna, I wanna try it. This is what I'm asking you. So I, I wanna try it, and then I can budget for it, because I don't, this life will be different for me shortly than what I've known in the past, so.
You do know people fill up your time, right?
I'm fully aware that they fill up my time.
I must fill it up with mowing before anybody else.
I, you have no idea how, I don't, it's disturbing, but, um, I, well, I mean, I love it.
Summer won't be too much different. It's gonna start being different come fall and winter.
Yeah.
As far.
Have that place to go every day.
Oh, I got a nice rank to, I, I don't.
Yeah, but it's.
Yeah, I understand. I'll go through withdrawals, but let's, let me enjoy my happy space right now.
Drive, no, wait a minute, I don't have to be there.
We're not.
Let me, let me get my happy place. Um, for the seniors, uh, skip, I just reserved, not reserved, I just purchased tickets for the seniors to go on the boat cruise to the Ethan Allen. Um, I had about twenty two that said that, and I have enough money in their line item that I'm paying for them to go. I offered that up to them, because otherwise it just goes to the general, and then next year it shifts over into my budget as a line item under recreation. So they're going, about twenty of them took me up on the going to Ethan Allen, and they're going on the twenty fourth of June. So we'll play that, pray that it's a Tuesday, so I'm assuming it's gonna be a beautiful day. Um, and then I'll go on the weekends, so hopefully they'll have a really good time.
The last two weekends don't look any better than the previous.
Yeah, I know. The, uh, border war over in West Rutland was an absolute success. Um, I'd never been to the town hall upstairs in West Rutland, and Amy, their rec director, and I chatted, so we're gonna try to get the groups together, but both jazz bands, the high school jazz band from West Rutland and the Rutland Town Jazz Band did phenomenal. I mean, no bias, but Rutland Town has a gem in their jazz band. And that's, that's not a secret, but it's pretty cool to watch them perform, and the adults were great. They tried to get them up dancing, but nobody really wanted to, but they did try. I'll give them credit. They tried to get them up dancing, but they love pizza. I would have never have known, really.
What?
They chowed the pizza down. Oh, my God, they love pizza. Love, love pizza. Anyway. Um, that's pretty much what I have so far. We, we will have to get a townwide committee meeting going, um, just to finalize what Bill has done, and then hand me the reins for the following year. Other than that, unless you have any questions, it's very busy, which is great. Um, and like I said, baseball is wrapping up in the next week or two. Um, and then it's just pool, 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 and swim, 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 so.
Any questions for our rec director? All right. Thank you.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, Dave Sears.
Hey, guys.
Highway Sewer and Water Commissioner.
I got promoted or demoted? Where does that go? Not a lot, a lot, but, um, we spent some time, uh, week before last. Uh, we hired, uh, A one for a couple of days and tried to get ahead of the MS four stuff, so we cleaned a, a whole bunch of catch basins. A bunch of, uh, culverts and stuff that, all this stuff is on the, our MS four uh, list, and we've kind of been caught behind the last couple of years, so I wanted to get ahead of it this year, so. Uh, we cleaned a, a bunch of basins and some pipes. We went to Winridge and, uh, mowed the Check Dam. We cut a bunch of trees a couple of weeks ago, probably, probably a month ago now. Uh, probably cut thirty trees off the Check Dam. And then we went up the other day, uh, one day last week and mowed it. Um, and weed whacked and made it all pretty, pretty, so, uh, that hasn't been done in quite some time, and it's, it's done now. Um, we have a new water connection on Post Road. Uh, we contracted with the city to do the connection. So that was on, uh, Wednesday last week, and that went well. It was a couple hours, and it was done. Um, and then we spent quite a bit of time the last week and a half or so on the, uh, shared use path. We've got it all based in, and, uh, we're working on topping it now. We're probably a third done with putting the top on it. Uh, we do have to put a catch basin in out in the woods, which confuses me to death because it's a sand pit, but uh, it's part of it, and we'll do it anyway. And that's kind of where we are, other than we had a, a highway committee meeting on Thursday. Cue up Joe.
Okay.
Right.
So Thursday last, we met with, uh, Robert Clark, and we reviewed and discussed the South End project. Um, we advised, Dave and I figured that in this timeliness of this project, um, we authorized Robert to put that out to bid, so the project has gone out to bid. The pre-bid meeting will be on the tenth at nine o'clock. I believe we're gonna meet here first, Bill? All right, so we'll meet here first, and then there will be a site visit for any of the, um, contractors that are interested in the project. Um, bid opening will be the twenty sixth of June at nine AM. And that will give Robert a chance to go through them, um, and then on, we're hoping on July first, we'll be able to uh, award the contract for the job. Um, there was some information on our desk here that was a little staggering, if you read through some of this stuff. No, not that part, that there was some numbers here I saw earlier, and I don't remember where they went. So you have, you have some estimates, and you have, uh, some of the, you have the, um, engineering services, uh, paperwork on there, and you have, uh, Kevin Brown's comments on the contract.
Right, so what I would do is not say this estimated price.
Gotcha.
Right, because what I do as a contractor, when I do business for work, is I go back through select board meetings, figure out what the estimated price is, and judge my bid off it. So we won't say this number.
Okay.
But ouch.
Yep.
So, and, and as you're all aware, the project is going to be the combination of open digging and boring. Um, they'll be boring across the road, putting a twenty four inch sleeve under Route seven, approximately hundred fifty to hundred sixty feet. They have to dig a crater twenty or thirty, maybe forty feet long by twenty feet wide by sixteen feet deep. It requires shoring and all kinds of safety measures to get the equipment in. And there has to be one on the digging side and one on the receiving side, so this is gonna be quite a project. Um, I noticed there were some differences in pipe size there, so I'm not sure. I think those would be questions. There's a six and eight and a ten inch price size, um, in that line of work, so I don't know how, if we'll be the one determining the price of pipe size, but, um, anyway. Yeah, I think we'll go on.
What do we do with our town attorney's letter of comments? Does that get incorporated in bid conditions?
Well, I think probably what we'll need to do, and I'm thinking the best thing since the contract is a standard contract used, just like we did for the Public Safety Bill, and these are standard contracts for this type of work. I think that copy of that should go to Robert Clark, and, and, um, then he can address that. We can address that with the successful bidder.
Okay, that's part of the contract.
Yeah.
And I mean, yes, that was a standard contract, but Kevin did modify the, some conditions of that standard contract.
I think what we do is.
After the pre-bid, he can always put a dent out with the changes.
Right, and, and I think once we pick the contractor, we'll go through the contract, and our concerns will be highlighted due to Kevin's paper, Kevin's response, and then we work that out with. There's, I don't think there's any sense in worrying about it now, once, once we decide on the recommendation from Otter Creek, who we should go with and, and who we decide.
There's nothing in here that's different from the bid specs.
I don't believe there is, but if you can, um, we could forward Kevin's response to Robert, so if he flags anything that he thinks is, he'll get back to us.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything.
Is that a bill? Would you take care of getting Kevin's remarks to Robert?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
The retainage question is the only thing I see maybe a contractor having a fit with, if they bid, if they bid with a certain retainage.
Right.
And then you want to change it, but if we get this to him, and then after the pre-bid, there's always addendas that go out with questions. And they can, these changes to the contract can be provided to the contractor.
Yeah.
All right.
And, and just make sure that, we'll make sure Robert's got, but I think.
ASAP.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good.
So, but that's where we are. Um, we did discuss, um, a little bit about the, uh, water connections, and we, we talked about a lot of things on the water connections, the idea of running the main up the east side of Route seven and connecting to Adele Stanley. Um, but this stuff is just mostly informational right now. Um, and then we did discuss a little bit about ongoing uh, works with the city and water usage, and, and it, it, it may be time that, um, we, we have to. it may be time that, um, we, we have to sit down and talk about their sale of water to town residents and how they treat the town. Um, because the city wants to sell water as an income to their operation and the town, I think the fire districts are sooner or later all going to be on that, you know? So it, it just might be time that we try to work something out where the town residents are treated the same as the city residents, because we could possibly add a thousand users to the city system and, and none of us can understand why it costs more to sell water to a town resident than a city resident. We're, we're still confused by that. So, um, I know this is a kind of a really sticky thing, but, um, it, it's, it's out there and, and if they want to do something, because one of the problems is with the new water quality requirements, a lot of the fire districts aren't going to be able to meet this. And, and the result, there's a couple of ways of doing things. Um, the installation of a, some type of a holding tank somewhere up off of, because a lot of them are off of Killington Avenue, Town Line Road. And you put in some kind of structure up there and, and that's just maintained and then it's gravity fed to all these systems and stuff. But, and we did talk to Robert a little bit and I'm still not sure if there's, might be some money or there might be some look, as you know, he, that stuff he talked to us initially about, but there's, there was some other stuff, so he's still out there looking to see if we can find some way, um, to do this, but it's, it's kind of looking like the town may have to get involved at some point
Yeah.
with the fire districts to help make this work.
Yep.
Um, just, you know, the, most of the distribution is there. It's, it's just going to be like eliminating wells and going to, but when you get into that area where a lot of the problems are there, the elevation is such that the water pressure wouldn't be adequate. So you have to come up with either, and the ideal would be a, a reservoir above the system and it would gravity feedback.
Okay.
But anyway, so those are things that we kicked around. Um, and then we did talk about change, taking the, uh, mall out of Diamond Run Mall place and just make it Diamond Run Place, um, as a, because it'll no longer be, but that was just a nine-one-one thing, a little thing. It's not too critical and Bill was going to look into it and see if that would, because it doesn't, if the mall is gone, it really is not.
It's still a building, yeah.
There's a building, but it's not, and it's not a, I don't think it's a, um, correct. Um, determine or name for, for the place. I was thinking we'd just change it entirely, but anyway. But we can talk, you know, maybe the folks that own it, but that's nothing too important. That was pretty much it.
Um, the Otter Creek Engineering, is this something requiring our approval? Or do we do that already?
Or?
We did it?
We've not done that.
Okay, this is the authorization to proceed. It's, um, the emergency sewer replacement, it's authorizing Otter Creek to do our engineering for this. Final design and permitting bid phase, construction phase.
I thought we did when we had them do it, but if we didn't.
Well, this is dated May twenty-ninth, so it was only a few days ago, their letter.
Authorization to proceed.
Oh, yeah. But it weighs into it to not.
Well, we might, you know, we might have said go ahead.
Yeah.
But then we need a document, so here's.
So I moved to authorize, um, Otter Creek Engineering to provide the services they have outlined in their, um, correspondence.
Okay, um, total budget is eighty-one thousand five hundred. It's for this project. Who would you like to sign it?
Is it just one?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we'd authorize the board chair.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to enter this contract with Otter Creek Engineering. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Uh, motion carries five zip. It's need assigned, which I am doing now.
So you guys feeling like Kevin's comments?
I have read, I didn't get quite through all of it, but. Like I said, as long as Robert's aware of those and, and when it comes, once, once the bidders can have a copy of what our concerns are, but, but we need to, you know, the retainage thing would be the thing, if it's five percent or ten percent, we just need to make sure they don't standard, you know, I think we had a little bit of that.
Um, you were, or a set should be prominently on file with Bill.
Do you want to, do we keep these here?
We, that's our set.
That's our set, okay. But we'll just, there you go. I've seen, I mean, I looked at it pretty good the other day, so.
Oh, did you guys talk about the, uh, horse mane coming off of Aspen Dental?
We did, and yeah, we did talk about it and, um, I think Robert was going to go look into it more.
Okay.
Try to figure out because that one.
You know, variety of solutions.
Yeah, they're trying to, you know, there was that one manhole where the water that in a stuff is supposed to go across to now, the flow is, so the town has to get down. Once we relocate that, that problem's still going to exist. So he's going to try to see if there's some solution to make that work.
Yep. I was going to bring that point up, but I missed a meeting.
Yeah, and we, uh, yeah, that.
Doing an emergency sewer service in the city.
Dave, Dave brought that up, so. And I don't think we missed anything else. I think we got everything.
We got everything?
Did I miss anything, Dave?
That sounds like I'm pretty much it.
Okay.
All right. Um, unless there's questions from other select board members, we'll let Dave go for the evening and thank you very much.
Back into vacation mode. Thank you. Guys, have a good night.
All right.
Yep.
You too. Uh, next up, Marcia Choffey, Town Head Lister. And you have on the desk a letter dated June first, first, twenty-twenty-five to us, um, concerning the requirement that we reappraise. So Marcia, you're aware of this, I would assume?
Oh, absolutely, I am. Um, this was the letter that normally does not come out until July, but this year seems like the, uh, letters are all coming out in, in June. Um, as you know, we did send out, I think it was fifteen or sixteen requests for proposal for reappraisal. We received no locations whatsoever, none.
When's the deadline?
May twenty-second.
Shoot.
Yeah.
And we can second guess why we're not getting any bids. Uh, but the only thing, well, well, right now, we're just trying to get everything done so that we can lodge the grand list. After that, we will take hold of contacting all of the reappraisal firms, um, speaking with them, asking them why they chose not to bid on, um, a reappraisal. But we have a feeling that because reappraisals firms are going out to late twenty-twenty-nine and twenty-thirty, no one is going to want to hold a price. But we've kind of talked about, well, maybe we can, you know, speak with these firms and, and see what we can do going forward. Um, the other thing on the other side of the, uh, of the, uh, the notice to reappraise, uh, Mary, is the response that we have to send to the state that, um, has to be signed by the select board so that we can get it back to them. And that is.
That's just, we are acknowledging receipt of their order to reappraise.
Yes.
Um, so. All right, response must be sent to the chair of the legislative body of the municipality or their design, or their designee. What's your, um,
We'll move.
What's, what has been made? Seconded?
Scribble away.
Further discussion? Nobody's going to bail me out. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 You'll be well retired by the time this comes out.
So that leads me to the front side of the letter.
Guess what, guys? So will I.
So I just want to be clear, um, Marcia, are you planning on doing number two? Which is within thirty days, respond to this order to indicate receipt while we're doing that part.
Right, yeah, that's it right now. Yep.
Okay, two. Okay, but the intention to develop a detailed compliance plan. And is, are you going to respond with the sample letter that you sent and the number of folks you sent it to?
Yes, um, we will, we will meet with, um, Christie Wright, our district advisor and, uh, sit down with her, go over our, you know, proposal, which actually the proposal that we sent out was based on quite a few other towns and it was, you know, we, we modified it for our own needs, but, um, you know, we, we sent it out and, uh, you know, we'll contact these people and say, you know, why, why did you not want to respond? Is there something that we can do to, you know, help you? You know, send us a, a request, um, but that, you know, right now, we're just, um, anxious to get the grand list lodged. And it's a good thing that we, um, went, you know, to PVNR for a, an extension because this year, as you all know, or maybe you don't, the utility valuations are being done by the state.
Hmm.
The whole state of Vermont, other than Rutland Town, has received their valuations. We have not received them. I've been in contact with Christie Wright, our district advisor. And we've been told that we may get them this week, hopefully. The problem is, and we've been told this year after year after year, Rutland Town is different than any other municipality in the state of Vermont because Velco is home base, as is Green Mountain Power. So there is a state assessor, Brian Fogg, who does all of the assessments for the state of Vermont. Um, we have been looking at a thread of all the other towns that have received their, um, valuations and it does not look good at all. We have to apply the CLA as per the Supreme Court decision back in, I think it was nineteen ninety-nine, where the CLA has to be applied to, um, the valuations that we get from the state. In past years, we've done our own valuations and it, it's been working out great with both Green Mountain Power and Velco. Um, I have received the business personal property from both GMP and Velco. So that has been already entered into our systems. However, I, we still don't know when we're going to get the valuation from the state for both GMP and Velco. There's a lot of people, a lot of towns that are extremely upset about what is happening with the valuations in these small towns that the townspeople are going to have to absorb through tax increases, tax rate increases.
So what you're saying is the valuations are coming through at a lower value than what the towns had on them?
Correct. And not only that, we've had to apply the CLA, which as you know, is seventy-two point nine one in Rutland Town. So it's, I, I, you know, I, I don't want to be the bearer of doom and gloom because we haven't gotten our valuation from the state yet. But, um, you know, I will absolutely keep you informed as soon as we get those values. Um, we're, we're still working on business personal property because they're coming in very late. We have two hundred and fifty-six account that, um, Kathy and I are working on. Um, it's been, it's been a, uh, it's been tough trying to, you know, get all of these values in. Uh, especially when you've got the Home Depots and the Staples and the Hannafords. And, you know, you're looking at Stowe. I went through thirty-eight pages of equipment for Stowe Industries because no one has deleted or paid attention to equipment since probably, I think it was last was nineteen ninety-nine. All of that has to be deleted and new equipment has to be entered. So it's been a learning curve for sure.
Um, I'm going to ask Bill to put on our next meeting agenda the follow-up of our report to PVNR for our plan um, to come into compliance and it's going to basically say, hey, we sent out for bids and nobody responded.
Right.
And, and step number two is, I don't know what's, but, but so I'm going to have, so that'll remind us we need to do that because we do have to respond within thirty days. The date of the letter is June first and our next meeting is just over. Well,
Seventeen.
Well, our next meeting is fine, but if we waited for a whole, we'd be.
Well, but the, but the letter that you, you sign, I can actually get that off, you know, if you sign it tonight, I can get that off tomorrow.
I did.
Yeah.
It's all signed.
All right, good. Then that we do. And a, a, as I stated, um, we're scurrying to get the grand list lodged so that we can, um, you know, um, we can schedule grievance hearings, hopefully. It'll be little or none, let's hope. Um, and then, uh, we will have time, you know, going forward in July to contact all of our bidders and just speak with them and say, you know, what is it that you want from us that we can give you to help you give us a bid? And then, of course, if we do get something and we look at the bids, we will, of course, review them with the board. And, um, hopefully, you know, lock in a date in time that we can do this. There's been another hundred and fifty-five towns that have had to reappraise this year.
Yeah.
Some of them.
Well, I'm, my, our compliance schedule is probably going to be annually until we have at least three companies bidding.
Absolutely.
We will send out bids again and until we get closer to the due date. So I don't think it's going to be terribly complicated as long as they know we've already reached out and B, we're going to do it every year until somebody responds.
That's right. Yeah, we will.
Okay. All right, any questions?
We will, we will meet with, um, Christie Wright and she, she will be working with us as soon as we get our, uh, PVR evaluations for our utilities. So.
Okay.
Hopefully this.
Very good.
Next week, but we'll see. Keeping our fingers crossed, maybe they'll be, maybe they'll be, uh, winging it with us and give us a, a higher appraisal of the GMP and Velco properties, but I don't hold out.
We'll see.
For that, yep.
All right, anything further for Marcia? Thank you, Marcia, very much.
You're welcome. Yep.
Nothing else? Okay. Thank you. Have a good rest of your evening.
You too. Good night.
Good night. Uh, now I had an email that Chris Clark was out of town, so would not be calling in. And we'll turn then to Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening.
Hi there again. Uh, let's see, I don't, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I don't have anything to really report tonight. Um, there's a few things on your desk that do, um, require signatures. Um, on behalf of Chris, he has two applications for firefighters. Did he end up emailing you, Mary? He said he was. Did he end up emailing you, Mary? He said he was going to.
Um, I almost think I had something on the desk.
Yeah, I put two of the applications there.
Yeah, it's just a matter of getting through the pile. We also have, here we are, okay. We do, we have two applications. One was for Aiden Austin, Robert Jenkins, who lives on the East Pittsford Road. Um, and he is applying and the applicant's signature is here. And the second is for Chase Purington, who is Center Street in Rutland, so he looks like a city. Um, the other looks like a town. Uh, is there a motion?
Approve.
Motion's been made to approve these two firefighters. And seconded. Any discussion or questions that we can't answer? Cause I don't know, but
I'm sure they did all, he's done this enough, he's got all the proper paperwork done.
Okay. I know that, I know that the, that the police did the background checks and he's made contact with them. I think they've even come to visit and um, I think this was the last step. To just have a signature.
Right, so all in favor of approving these two people as firefighters, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries five zero and everybody gets to sign.
Thank you. I'll let them know about that. And then um, I was, I noticed that um, the copy that we keep in the office for the um, onset of the next audit that you, you signed that last time. Um, there's a copy that we both need to sign to keep in the office, so I left that on your desk as well.
With the big yellow sticky that says, please sign this copy. Okay, do we already authorize? We did in our last meeting. I think we authorized the hiring of AM Peish to do our audit, so. Uh, and I think, was I at that time authorized to sign on behalf of the board?
Sounds about right.
Yeah, sounds about right.
Yes, your, your original is in my office.
Okay.
I believe the next thing that I left there was the infamous dog warrant.
Oh, yes.
That the select board signs and I hand over to the police department with the lovely language.
Alright, this is the warrant to destroy unlicensed dogs and it's a directive from the select board to our chief and deputy chief. And the, you know, the yeah, the, it's a page, almost two pages of animals that haven't been re-registered. I'm relieved to see that my animal is not on the list. It's good to know. So, what's your pleasure with this?
Do we have a choice?
I think so.
I don't know, I've never signed it.
Yeah.
State of Vermont, you are hereby commanded forthwith to impound and destroy in any humane way or cause to be destroyed in a humane way. All dogs not duly licensed and collared according to law.
Come put me in cuffs for not signing it.
Let me just put it this way, we do need three. We should have three people.
Direct us to this one.
What are we going to do about unlicensed dogs then?
I'll send people more warnings to take ignore. I guess they should have the authority and exercise their discretion accordingly.
Not a tasteful.
No, it's not.
They have to make.
It's not. But just remember what happened when the, the kid was bitten over at Dewey Field and we were able to get some information. And I was bitten several years back and I was able to get information that the dog was registered and had rabies.
Have their dogs uh, rabies shots and, and, you know, have that information on file. I mean, it's, but I still don't like the idea that the board has to say, well, if we find out your dog wasn't registered, then we can have it put down. But that's, that's always been a little distasteful.
Yeah, so I'm not hearing anyone stepping up to make the motion to approve this.
Who wants that in the minutes?
Of course, as chair, I shouldn't be making motions. That's the one out, I guess.
I'll move to approve it.
Alright, Matt's moved to approve. Is there a second?
I know we have to do it.
Motion's made and seconded. Is any further discussion other than, nobody likes this, but all in favor of approving, however reluctantly, this warrant, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, so there's a nay and a nay? Okay, alright.
They'll be coming looking for me and Matt and Mary. If the chief was here, he would tell you that they haven't had to do this.
I'm pretty sure he said he wouldn't do it because it's a pretty easy way to get shot.
System of government is collapsing around our ears.
To take the wrong person's dog, that may not go.
So everybody has signed the fire, the fire thing, firefighters, okay? And this is
It's just dog owners took a little responsibility. I mean, it's, there's people that have concerns about registering your dog, but if it's part of the process of owning, it's, it's a cost of ownership.
There is a cost of ownership.
It's like thousands of dollars of vet bills for the cows.
Okay, well, Carrie, you've got us all stirred up, but we've got three signatures on the warrant, so what's next?
Excuse me, there really wasn't anything next. Um, the uh, honestly, the, the, I know that the, the contacts for the, the dogs are strictly, you know, I think they, they deal with it really well, the police officers do. But it does stink that the language is so, such that, so harsh. But thank you for signing it. I mean, it's not that I wanted it signed, I think we had to do it, so. Hopefully more people will register in the years coming up, so. But I really don't have anything other than, if you have any questions.
Anything for Carrie from the select board? Okay, thank you, Carrie, appreciate it.
Welcome, have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike Delahanty, First Constable, not on the line. Joe Donardo, Public Safety Building Clerk.
There's nothing new to report. I did ask the PD while they were here, they seemed everything done. I know Ted said that the they have remedied the hole in the wall in the evidence room. They took care of that, came up with a plan. Um, we're still waiting on the um, transfer switch. And I want to talk with Gary about, I have an idea for the public safety building sign out front.
Okay.
That I want to run by him. And the idea would be to take those letters off and purchase the same letters that are on the tower, but put them not on the building physically, but on a signboard. Something that would be attached.
So you can attach it to the building.
So that we can ensure that. And I want to see what his thoughts on that, so. Because I think of that whole thing, the color, the logo, everything, that has generated the most negative feedback. It's, who the heck designed that? So, but the lighting out there was not designed to light the sign.
Right.
Now, that was just not, anyway, so that's what I'm working on. Otherwise, everything looked pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, I wasn't here last week.
Speaking of which.
The open house went well.
Yeah, we received a letter from Ina M. Sears, who was, came to our open house, toured the building with a firefighter named Adam. And she was wonderfully pleased with everything and she said, what a wonderful station it is and it was worth every penny. So um, yeah, circulated, so.
We got, we got one, please.
Yeah, we got it, we got an Adagai's letter. So thank you very much for writing.
God, this lady has officially nice handwriting.
I know.
I can even read this.
Okay, anything else, Joe? For public safety, okay. Uh, John Paul Fignant is not on.
Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
So just one thing, um, this is something the planning, the Town Planning Commission's been working on for a while, the subdivision ordinance. And a couple meetings ago, I mentioned to you folks that we had spoken with the town attorney. And um, he had told us that um, we have some problems with the subdivision ordinance. No matter how much we try to change it, um, so you know, some of that's whether it can be enforced or not. So the planning commission um, is wondering if the select board would be willing to invite Kevin Brown to um, tell you um, what he, he told the planning commission about his review of the subdivision ordinance. Um, and we can do this as a joint meeting or a special meeting or however you want it. Uh, but they wanted to, to make that request to you folks. That would help us figure out um, how to go forward with this. Because there's several, there's several ways we can. Um, but we would like the select board to have as much information as we have about this.
Um, so Barbara and I spoke about this briefly today and um, it I think, first of all, the planning commission has done a lot of hard work and they put a lot of time into this and I think um, we want to hear what they have to say, but we also want to hear what town attorney has to say about this. And directions we can take or not and give our feedback um, to the planning commission so they have some direction. So um, I'm perfectly willing and I think we could like dedicate the first half hour of one of our select board meetings coming up. Um, the next one may be fairly busy because we've got the end of the year, or the things to do before the end of the year and we just added a few things to that list. Um, how is July first? That's, that's a month away. Are there, I guess we need to find out if Kevin Brown's available because he's the primary player. And then whether um, we have members of the planning commission who would care to join us.
We want to start at five thirty?
Actually, that might be better, starting at five thirty, so.
I hear until midnight.
Yeah, yeah. And then we could go into our regular meeting at
Do that first.
At six, yeah, okay. So um, why don't you sound out your folks and I'll ask Bill to be in touch with Kevin to see, and I've got to talk with him anyway, so let me just
Be in person?
Um.
Was in person for the planning commission meeting?
Yeah.
His, his uh,
Last time he was in person here.
His convenience. I think, you know, if he's busy, then no, but it's more important that he's here.
Okay, alright, so well, well, thank you very much. Alright, so and, and again, thank the planning commission for all of the work they've put into this and I know it has been a lot. Uh, that's why I haven't gone near you guys because I would hear about it.
That's probably smart.
Anything else for Barbara? Oh, and thank you also for your review of the um, demolition Act two fifty amendment application from BAI and you got to that quickly and we appreciated it, so.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to do anything else with the municipal questionnaire.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, it should just be department heads, so yeah, okay.
Yep. Just
That part of that, I just, I find that interesting that they want to know if tearing that down is going to create an issue for us. I, I understand a new construction and new building, but you're removing all this problem. And we still have to fill that portion out. I, I find that just
Well, it's an amendment to an existing, and I mean, think of the demolition debris. They did address it very well in their, their but if they hadn't, where would we be?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't expect them to tear it down and leave it in the pile up there.
Yeah, well.
And I don't, you know, and I just, I just found it interesting. But I've never been involved with a demolition of a bit, building going through Act two fifty. It's usually construction and, and we're usually so eager that, like, sure, it up yesterday.
Mary, should this, a copy be made of this and given to the fire chief?
I think that's a very, well, fire and police.
Yep.
Because it's their building, so, yes, please, Bill, we're going to put um, the letter in the green folder and if you could make a copy, this is from um, Ina M. Sears, if you could make a copy for each fire and police chief, we'd appreciate that. Okay, thank you. And thank you, Barbara.
Okay.
And we'll still, we'll, we'll visit with you when we've got something set up, so thank you for that. Oh, which, yeah, sorry, go ahead. What was that?
Uh, the letter of interest regarding Town Planning Commission and Regional Commission.
Yes, while you're on, we do have a person who is interested in um, serving on the regional commission, we have appointed uh, Jim Marsh as the primary. And this is uh, Dimitrio Colosius Gagnon. He lives on Lola Drive in Rutland Town. He has a background in transportation. And he expressed interest in did he say, I know it was
Anybody that wants a job and they're willing to come forward. I can't see how we could possibly deny that.
Okay, so there's two alternate positions, one on the Town Planning Commission because that Jim Hall retired and we didn't fill that position. And also on the um, regional commission, Jim's our primary, um, and we need somebody to serve as alternate. What's your pleasure? Yes.
There's another transportation position within that planning commission.
Is it TAC?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's the transportation area.
Is that the one that Jason wanted to do?
Do we appoint Jason to that?
We did.
Okay, so, yeah.
That has an alternate too, I believe.
Have we ever filled the alternate position on that? I'm not sure.
Have, not, not very, not very long.
Yeah. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
I thought, I said, if anybody willing to take a job comes to us, we would be foolish to turn them down.
Okay. And Rutland Regional Board of Commissioners, alternate.
Told my wife.
I think he came.
You managed to vote it in. So that's great. I says, well, that was preceded by the comment, if he wants it, give it to her.
He came to a board meeting.
Yes, he did. He sat in back.
Yep.
And he, you know, started speaking on, on a transportation thing. We sort of said, you know, we don't usually, but go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Here we go.
Yep. What's your pleasure?
Hmm, good point.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint two as alternate to the Rutland Town Planning Commission and alternate to the Rutland Regional um, Planning Commission.
Two for one, sure.
I know, kind of. Wait till he finds out. Jim can tell him what it's like when he shows up here. Alright, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zip. So if you would let Mr. uh, Colosius Gagnon know.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Have a TAC alternate. Good, Jason's on here, but we still have a vacancy for the alternate position.
For TAC?
Yep.
Well, if he wonders it again. Yeah, we'll start it too. Alright, so you have a new member, if he accepts it.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Anything else for Barbara? If not, thank you, have a good rest of your evening.
Okay. You too.
Alright, um, Bill Sweet, Town Administrator.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, so yes, I will get in touch with him and, and um, see how many more things he wants to do for us. You have, on your desk, you have a letter.
letter from uh, your friend Zoni.
Oh, yes.
He couldn't attend tonight, uh, so he sent you a letter and um, it's the very top one there, Sharon. Um, and there also is, that kind of course corresponds with uh, number one in your packet.
Right, Matt Getty drafted the Rutland Town version of the resolution condemning attacks on due process and affirming constitutional rights of all people in Rutland Town. So what are you giving us, Matt?
So, didn't create a red line here, but, and I don't have the original in front of me, but I think essentially what I did was change. Yeah, this was based on the, on the version that was adopted for the city and I changed the references to the city to the town. I deleted, I believe it was the last two paragraphs of uh, of the original. Part of which, um, as I recall, was, you know, some language inviting police chief or other police officers to sign on individually. And I felt like that was not something we should be putting them in the position of doing. We're, we're, we're the policy setting body here and we would uh, make the decision and, and pass on that policy accordingly, but um, that was essentially the gist of the changes, I believe.
Okay. Um. So, is there a motion?
I would, I'll move, really approve this as edited.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
One second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion. As I've said in previous meetings, you know, we, Matt and I both take us to uphold the constitution, so this is. We, we're already there, we have to as lawyers. And due process is an important part of it. You ready for the vote? If so, all in favor of adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Sharon, yes? Kurt?
Close.
Okay. Motion carries four one. And we could just circulate this. And then we can sign it, you're going to have to.
Did you want, I did, I, I didn't know if you wanted a copy on letterhead for you all to sign.
Well, it does relate to Rutland Town, I can just put a note here that says, adopted by Rutland Town. Select word. Six, three, twenty. Okay, that's circulating.
All right.
What's next?
Uh, the next item uh, in the list is uh, review the offer to purchase town property, which is number two in the packet.
So, you will recall an adjoining property owner. Um, Mr. Ruggerio is offering to purchase the 29 acres. Um. That we received, I think ultimately in a, was it a tax sale?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, um. Thank you. Yeah, what's your pleasure with this? It's, you know, purchase price is $20,000 and he gives his reasons for um, wanting to do it, um, frankly, in no hurry, we had, we had a proposed purchaser in the past and that deal fell through. Um. If we do, we, if we propose to sell this, we do have to go through a process of warning it in the newspaper so people, you know, know what we're doing and going through that process in case somebody wishes to object.
I don't know, I think it's a halfway fair purchase price for a piece of land that's mostly wetland, landlocked. And I think we'd have a hard time selling it elsewhere.
What was all the money? We got it for the taxes, right? That's how we ended up with this property with the tax tip.
Yeah.
And we ended up with it.
Yeah, and there's, yeah, so.
This offset what was owed?
I believe it is, I believe it does, but I, I'd have to pull out the numbers again. It's about two years ago now that we went through it.
Yeah, but.
I don't know.
I mean, it's not something that's a hot, hot item.
Nope.
No.
Why, I just get it back on the tax roll.
There's no guarantee um, that anything's going to happen with it.
Not whether the taxes will be paid.
Right.
While that's.
There's always that possibility, yes.
We'll get $20,000 and we'll get it back.
There we go. Taxes don't get paid, we can't, we can't.
I don't think we've approached any of the adjoining, other than the one who made the bid.
Yeah.
Um, the adjoining property owners, uh, there are other abutters to it.
There's a few.
There are a few abutters.
Couple. Is, is there access to it? No.
Well. It, um, John claims that the only access is through his property, so.
Yeah.
Kind of. And I. To the decent part, like, if you're to come in from the Route 7 side, you're going to have to deal with wetland permits to try to get some sort of access in there.
Yeah.
And it. I can't remember, I know it borders on some of the other land, like up, almost in back of Max.
The border of Max.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that's all the wetland side?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, does it border the?
Trying to think who's.
The armory?
No, 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 Max is south of here.
All right.
It might border. I don't know, is that the land across from Noble? That, that runs up there, but I don't know if that goes far enough up back.
Yeah, that, that goes to it.
So there.
Pistols and Roses, I think, unless, or did they?
Yeah, I thought that was.
Pistols and Roses owns the property in the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so, well, it sounds to me like they found the questions.
Well, my question, he's made us this offer.
Yep.
What's our price? Usually when you're negotiating, I mean, he's made us an offer for 20 grand, what do we want?
Probably, it'd best go into executive session for that.
Um, yeah, we probably should, however, I don't have those numbers and I think we need to pull out the old information.
I think before, before we approve this, I think we should see what the numbers are.
We need to know what the numbers are.
And we kind of need to figure out the, the next steps and how we go about accepting an offer like that.
Yeah, because there is a process.
You know, it's not like we advertised it.
Right.
And this, this bid came to us, you know, we didn't advertise it to everybody, so.
Yeah, I think that.
Probably has to get re-advertised.
I think we do.
Yeah.
So um, let's get information, put it on the agenda if you would please for the next meeting.
I'll dust off the email from Kevin.
I know Mark's not interested, he called me the other night.
Yeah.
Said I asked him.
Yeah.
And he said, no.
Okay, but let's, let's get the information together and take it up at our next meeting. Yeah.
It's not like this is really burning.
It is not, not for me anyway. Okay, so.
What's up?
All right.
Yep.
What's next?
Uh, on your desks, you have from Mary, the copy of the updates to the regional land use map.
Okay, it's a two pager, one is pretty colored, and if you look closely, there are one, two, three little areas designated where we think the regional future land use map boundary should be changed or extended. Uh, the first one is way down south, south end of town. And we said, just go to the, take the transitional infill area and extend it all the way down to the Clarendon Town Line. Um, the second one is over in, different, different one, over in um, Flori Heights saying, you've put this in transitional infill, it's really not, it's all residential. So please return it to the residential designation. And C is, I think I got this right, but correct me if I'm wrong, the property across from Rutland Town School on the south side of Post Road, which um, we think should be marked as transitional infill as well.
I think those are the things we discussed.
Did I get them right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Be good to me.
All right. So.
What's the next step?
Um, we file it with Logan Solomon, Regional Planning Commission, how about if you guys authorize me to do this?
Still move.
One time, I'm actually asking. All right, motion's been made to um, authorize me on behalf of the select board to send these um, comments and requests for revisions into the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
And our, we are kind.
Yes, because we got an extension, because Mary was, had too much on her plate there for a while.
We asked nicely and we were.
So granted it, an extension.
The one thing after thinking about the post road thing, you might want to just add, because of its accessibility of town water and sewer. That explanation as to why we think that should be.
It is. Okay, done. All right, all in favor of um, sending this in, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, okay, motion carries five zero and I'll get that filed.
All right. Uh, let's see, the uh, next thing on the agenda is updates to the street sidewalk ordinance. Uh, there was some comments that Kevin had that he and I have not had a chance to connect back up on, so. Uh, it's, it's nothing major, but we want to get it done, so. That's just going to move on. Um. The next you have in your packet uh, is the updated quote for the cascade system.
Yes, um, you may recall that when we met with the fire committee before the last meeting uh, and there are minutes in the packet. We looked at whether it was possible to purchase the cascade system with what was in the fire budget and in the um, depreciation fund.
I don't think we should, you'd be able to use the depreciation.
Oh, that's probably, okay.
Yeah, because if we, if we had a previous system, we could.
Capital improvement, all right, that's, okay.
So.
So, the purchase, and we didn't know the exact purchase price or whether the bid was still good, well, it appears the bid is still good. Valid through 7/20/25 in the amount of $88,584.40. Um, this would um, be in part paid for by some donations we have received, which I believe is in the vicinity of $13,500. It would also include what looks like the department would have as um, unexpended budgetary funds, somewhere around maybe $30,000, somewhat less probably at the end of this year. And the balance would come from the capital improvements fund, which based upon what we saw from Kerry and the amount coming in uh, from the 1% tax, we should be, we should be okay with.
So do we do this now or do we do it? I mean, I, the.
We have time because the bid is good.
I'm just wondering, it will be close, because it, it's always the same thing with the fire, that money will roll into the capital improvement fund on the 1st of July, so it's not lost out of their budget, any access.
Yeah, I'd be more comfortable doing it after then when we know for certain what our balance is.
I think if we've got time, I, I, I support using the capital improvement fund to do it. I just like, we're this close to the end of the year, we could have some, you know.
A little more certain.
More idea what the new number will be based on what's going back and what the final tax payment is.
You. I don't disagree, and, and I'm fine with that because we have time. My concern would be we may not know right after the close of the fiscal year, how much is really in there. You'll recall, we waited quite a while to.
Yeah, I mean, there'll, there'll be a.
Yeah.
I think Kerry will have.
But we'll be a little closer to know.
She'll have a, a number that may not be perfectly accurate, but it won't be so far off that we'll give her.
Right.
And I'm okay with that, but I think that's a good plan.
All right.
Like, it's probably going to be like a July 15th vote then, probably. Because I doubt she's going to have that paperwork together on the 1st.
Yeah, that gives us five days.
Just fine.
Yeah.
Can approve it the 15th and they can get it ordered that week.
When is it that we have our tax grade discussion?
Um, after.
August?
It's late sometime, late July, when we have a, yeah.
Kerry's gone, so she would.
Yeah.
I don't know, when, when does that last payment usually come in?
I mean, last.
We got it.
We got it.
All right, so are we over?
Yes.
We're over on the 1%.
Huh?
On the 1%?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do we know what that amount is?
I don't know, you, you have, she gave it to you last, last week.
Last week.
Or last.
Yeah, I missed last week.
It goes 200,000?
Over.
Yeah.
Yeah, 150, 20,000, it wasn't.
A note on it that says, keep this, now I can't find it.
Maybe, I don't know. It wasn't a knockout ballpark, but we had money.
No, but that, that usually ends up into that fund because we aren't over anywhere else. It would only offset if an overture in the police budget, if that happened.
The police budget was after our review today, was looking pretty good.
I think we're okay, so, so technically the money will be there, because that's usually.
290.
290?
Over? Well.
Good enough.
You could almost approve that, but if you guys are more comfortable, we could wait.
What's your pleasure?
Well, I, I think another discussion. I'm not sure these things are mutually exclusive, but last year, I believe we used some of that money to pay down on one of the bonds. And I think that's a discussion we should be having again as well. So.
Yeah.
All right, so let's, do you want to do July 1st or wait until July 15th for the vote on the cascade system?
Yeah. We'll know more after next meeting, I guess.
All right.
I mean, we can ask Kerry.
Did you get rid of those caramels and now it's stuck in your teeth?
Jolly Rancher.
Yeah. So we could probably, by July 1st, we should have.
Okay. Let's do this, let's stick it on our agenda for July 1st.
I mean, any, any money, any, any expenditure out of the capital improvement, whether we, whatever we use it for, we have to vote on, so.
Yes.
We'll, we'll know at that point.
And the next meeting, we're going to be voting, the next meeting, we're voting on the um, oh, keeping the Cortina Fund separate.
Right, so, yeah. Have to do that before the end, yeah.
Okay, so tell the fire guys, please not to despair, we have a plan and we're working toward it. All right.
Uh, okay, the next thing we have is uh, and on the list is the, the, there's a secondary printer in the clerk's office and its contract is up. And number four is the agreement for the new machine.
Well, so I'm familiar with the one for the land records, which one is this?
This is between Susan and Deb, they have one on their desk. This is a color machine, but they use for smaller, smaller things, but they use it quite a bit.
This was big.
It's, it's, it's the same as what they have, it's, it's a, it's a new version of what they have, the, it was, it's, I mean, that one's four years old at this point, so.
Now, we just proved that, like, you know, it's like four years, right?
I know, seems like just yesterday. All right, what's your pleasure?
To approve.
Motion seconded. Made and seconded to approve the purchase of. Is it purchase or a long term?
Uh, a lease.
Lease.
It's a monthly service contract and it's a lease.
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? And looky there, printed name, authorized signature. And has um, Kerry and Susan looked at this?
They know about it, yes.
Okay. And they're satisfied with the terms, if it's within their budget and all of that good stuff?
It is.
All right, is there? See, motion's been made and seconded, I did that, right? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries five zip, who is to sign?
Mary.
Forgot that part. Motion to have me signed, seconded by Kurt, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
The next item in your packet is the agreement with North Star Fireworks for our display. Um. Um. There is no rain date included because there was no option to, the townwide celebrations either that day or it's not, so we didn't put in a.
Move to approve and authorize Cherry sign.
So if we need a rain date, could we do it down on my farm? Motion's been made and seconded.
If we get, if we get rained out, just have them deliver the fireworks.
We'll figure out what to do.
Oh, God. I mean, you guys have done them.
Just bring them over, drop them off, we'll figure it out.
Seriously, what does happen?
We do.
We don't, we don't.
Could do New Year's fireworks.
So they just don't do it. We don't pay them anything. If it, if there's no display, there's no payment. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
Oh. It is a weekend, so it's, I mean, about eighty-five percent chance it's gonna get rained out. We reschedule it for a Wednesday.
Do we get reimbursed? If it rains, no, cuz the checks and the orders.
We have not had an issue with them. We are, we are actually one of their longest customers, so we don't, we don't have a problem.
We'll figure it out.
They don't give us the money back, this will be the last.
It'll care, it'll carry over.
Yeah.
Like.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have one big show the next year.
Uh, north, uh, Montpelier area.
Yeah, Williams Town, I think.
One of the advantages of doing.
I drove by the place. They stored.
I don't think they keep a lot stored until.
No.
It's close to go down.
If we were to go back. To scheduling us on the fourth, at some point, the advantages you do then have townwide as a backup.
Yeah, that's how we.
That's right.
Got to that situation, right? Cuz the fourth got rained out and we did the rain day.
Yes.
I remember that was the, that was the absolute worst thing I had to do is make the call to postpone the fireworks and. People bitch cuz of course it cleared up right after.
It did, yeah. There was no good, there was no good outcome for that.
Some, some days you just can't win.
No, you really can't.
Yeah.
Um, so we need to, do we do a motion?
Think we need an aye. We got first and second.
Okay, first and second, all all to approve the North Star Fireworks contract. Please say aye.
Alright.
Aye, and have me sign on behalf.
Yeah.
And and make the weather forecast.
And.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, yeah, don't, don't put your signature anywhere near anything to do with the weather.
Gotcha.
That that'll bite you long.
Oh, man, it sure will.
Uh, the last thing in your, in, we haven't gone over is the uh, town officials list. Um, so we've got a few, we've been able to fill in a couple blanks tonight. That's pretty good, three in one night. That's, that's, that's excellent. Uh, the last page is our, some of our historical ones and. Uh, the tree warden actually is one that we do really actually use. Uh, Chris is willing to do it again. Uh, the other ones are more. Historical, but but the tree warden is one we actually do uh, want to have somebody in that role, so um. As far as the other ones go, you know, we 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 normally do these in March and we're we're a little, we're, we're getting a little far away, so.
So, um, um, the cemetery commissioners did vote to appoint Dakota Harvey. But I'm not sure, see, I think he's gotta come over and do his oath.
Okay.
He found a victim.
Cool. Yep, they live around the corner.
Yeah. Nice though.
Yep, nice guy.
Had to go out there and tell him to put his fire.
Yes.
So we gotta do all those that are.
We haven't done it, we haven't done any of them.
Oh.
Alright, I move that we reappoint all these people in the red boxes in the last page.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Layer of coal tree warden, pound keeper, inspector of wood, and three fence viewers. Um, to the current incumbents, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Alright.
Excellent.
Sure that now backing up Rutland Free Library, we did appoint Fern Fryer. Remember, we voted on that last meeting?
Well, we sent her name to them.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
Wait, we're waiting for them to confirm.
Alright, actually, um. I I I haven't heard, I don't know if they've actually voted, but I did hear that her name came from another. Source too, so they're probably.
O- odds are in her favor.
Really good.
Okay. Well, that that adds like probably more names to the list tonight than than any other time, so that's excellent. Thank you. That that helps.
Okay.
Uh, and let's see, you have the buddy, you have the buddy status reports. Uh, and the last couple things, um. The door locks at the new public safety building were completed yesterday. And they are working as anticipated, so. That's, that's good. Um, we're gonna try and get the highway garage ones done next week and then we'll be all set. Um, Joe had mentioned during the highway, with the highway committee meeting, we talked about um, the name of Diamond Run Mall Place. Uh, I did talk to Tyler at the state. Nine one one coordinator and he says no issue if we wanna just drop the word mall from it. And make it Diamond Run Place, um. And that would be a little more generic than what we have in house.
Well, my suggestion.
Shouldn't we have asked them?
There's weight.
They're interested.
Well, so, so if if there's no big objection to it, I was gonna, I was gonna talk to to Attorney Drake and say like. We 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 wanna time it because it does actually affect their applications. Because the name, they put the road, they put the address down and we don't wanna inadvertently cause them a.
Yeah.
How does it work when you have two entrances to the same place?
It's a loop. It's there, it's, it's, it starts, it starts at the north entrance. So the car wash is fifty Diamond Run Mall Place.
Okay. I just, I just curious cuz they have two, every place else has one.
Yeah.
So that, that's.
Well, yeah, like Roy Avenue was a loop, but so there there isn't, it is accounted for in that, you you, there's a, there's a, there's a end, beginning and end, so it's.
Theoretically, there should be another sign down at the four, seven intersection that says Diamond Run Place.
If if you like, one weekend, we.
Well, no, cuz there isn't one.
I know, I know a guy that can put one up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, since we've got, we've got.
Fun without, we don't put it in the state highway.
Well, I should, the state should put that one up.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, VTR should put that out. I think they take care of the ones where it meets a state road. I think.
We can, we can find that out.
Negative, so did we run up by the car wash?
No.
But that needs to stay.
If, if, so this, well, I I dealt with this on the Cedar Avenue thing. When the state paves the road and they replace signs, they replace them. And once they replace them, they are the town's responsibility for ever and ever and ever and ever until they pave again. Okay, yep.
Right. And no matter how many times the car runs them over.
Doesn't matter.
You know, personally, kinda like just leaving, take them all off and put Diamond Run.
And Tyler's got no issue, there's no, there's no issues with other.
Certainly would be fine to.
But since, since it affects.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I said, I was gonna, I was gonna talk to Dave and feel like, you know, we.
Maybe, maybe they want a new name.
Well, we we thought about that as, as a, well, but making it generic, just, just kinda for that reason, but.
Yeah.
Um, the, the other thing was if we take just the word mall out, it would have very. It would likely have a very small impact on messing up deliveries.
Right.
Because delivered drivers are gonna see it, they're gonna go, it's, it's not gonna cause a problem.
Yeah.
It would become more generic and and the change can happen in like twenty-four hours. So if we just like. If they've said, hey, yeah, we wanna do it, make it effective, like August first be perfect, we can have it set in there, so. July thirty-first, it's one name, August first is another name and it's done, so we could, we could do that, so. Um, it's a, it's a very easy thing to do, but but it seemed like it was a good idea to, to make it, to make the change. Now versus when things are really underway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I've got a few projects in Northwood to get done. I gotta help Mike with some things, I help Dave with some things, so I'm gonna try and get those done before the pool opens, so I'll be. In and out of here, but um, and that, I think we're, we're, we got, there's a lot going on. Um, but we've got a lot, a lot, we're, we're moving in good direction, so um, that is, uh, that is everything that I have.
So how did you make out with the law? Uh, information dissemination problem? Have have we figured that out?
The. Wh- what do you, what do you mean specifically?
The, it was supposed to be a certain dollar figure per lock.
Yes, that's done.
And and we, and did they, we agreed to what we said?
Yes, they did. Yes, they did. We worked, we.
I knew you were pulling your hair out, trying to figure out why they would change it.
It it is, we 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 got it. It's, uh, yeah. Yeah.
Very good, and there's, they're all programmed at the.
They are all programmed, they are, we, we were there a lot, we were there uh, last night for the meeting and and everybody there got tested it out, so it worked, it worked out well.
Um, did you remove the contractor code out of it?
There are no generic codes in the door locks anymore.
Okay.
Anyway.
And maybe that defeats the whole purpose of having these locks.
It does, so we, a- and what's interesting is that this, with the way these work now is I get. I I can get real time reports. If someone puts in a code that's invalid, if comes up as. An attempt was made to open the door, date and time and location, so. I know what day, what time and what door was tried to be accessed, so we've already come up with some codes that were. Out there that shouldn't have been out there that were trying to be used and didn't work, so, yeah, it's interesting.
Cool.
Yeah. Oh, um, I will also be out next Monday. I won't be here Monday. But um, I'm not.
Um, alright, highway committee, you met. Is there anything else that?
No, we just.
We covered it all.
That, that's pretty good.
Um, police committee, we shared with you what we did earlier today. Um, let's see, we did the regional commission, planning commission map. Did the Diamond Run Mall. Anything else on our action item list that we need to attend to? When we did the clerk's office printer? Any other new items, select board? Okay.
Well, the public safety building. And we talked a little bit about that. Do we wanna think, I don't know. Put something up there to discourage people from turning around in that parking lot? I don't know how. I mean, you put signage, I I I'm gonna talk with, again with Ted and, you know, if we can. Notice damage or something there, the, now that we have security systems in place, um, we could find out who. Who has turned it around. When Mr. Twitter's was open, the tractor trailers, that's where they turned around.
Okay.
And a lot of the damage to the parking lot prior to the new building was caused by. Delivery trucks turning around up there. So I don't know if we need to put something up, um.
I think so.
I don't know if he can stop them, no.
I think, yeah. I mean, it's frankly, I'd rather have them turning around there than on the public road.
I prefer they didn't turn around either.
Well, yeah.